This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. Our meeting will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Phelps, Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel? Kincaid?
Here.
Klinghammer? Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tiwol?
Here.
Von Heden?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 11th session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this duty by working with citizens and collaborating with staff and reading the considerable amount of materials in our packet. We arrived this afternoon ready to exercise our responsibility. And we welcome those of you who are joining us in chambers and are grateful, as always, to community television for broadcasting and streaming these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. We do have important items on our agenda, so we will get going. Just a quick reminder for council members that we will be adjourning into a closed session after the close of the public portion of our meeting tonight. But we'll do so in chambers. So let's begin with the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, thank you. I have to back up just a little bit. Before we take up the consent agenda, as we didn't have a Monday meeting, which is usually the time when we hold our public hearings and take public input and listen, rather than holding the meeting last evening for one item, we decided to open up our meeting tonight with a public hearing. So before we take up the consent agenda, the Chair will read into the record one item for a public hearing and ask if anyone is present to speak to that item. The item is "A Public Hearing on the Charter Ordinance Relating to the City Council and the Reapportionment of the Aldermanic Districts of the City by Adding Newly Created Wards to the Appropriate Aldermanic District." Madam City Clerk, did you have a presentation or later on in our action item?
I'll go for later on.
Okay. Is anyone here to express an opinion about our changing Aldermanic wards? Okay. Seeing none, the Chair will close item one and close our one public hearing for the evening. Thank you to council members for keeping me on task. We then move to our consent agenda. Do council members have questions or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? I see no such desire. On a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tiwol?
Aye.
Von Heden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
I said I.
Oh, he said I. And the consent agenda is passed. We open up then our business agenda with item 11, a resolution granting a combination Class B intoxicating liquor, infarin' and malt beverage and a Class B cabaret license to the District 101 Graham Avenue. Mr. David Zempel, Agent. Mr. Hofer.
Thank you. As you said, this is an application for a combination Class B for the district restaurant at the location formerly occupied by Playmakers. This matter came in front of license review a while ago. Intend to have a restaurant with a Friday Fish Fry, same location again as Playmakers. The owner previously owned the Encore Bar and Restaurant in Altoona, which burned down, has an ownership interest in two other licensed alcohol establishments, including the College Bar in Menominee and another wedding venue in New Auburn. There were no objections at license review to granting this license. However, there were a couple items of discussion, one being that Playmakers had some issues with garbage once their garbage receptacles across the street were removed. My understanding is the last few months, Playmakers was in business, they had addressed that issue, but it is a challenge and it is something that's going to have to be monitored on an ongoing basis. And it's something we intend to monitor. Another item of inquiry I've received from a couple of city council members, as some of you may know, there is a, I'm trying to think of how to, a youth amusement company called The District Company that has a lot of vintage video games and things of that nature that's located somewhat just a few blocks away from the district. You may have seen a letter that came in from Mr. Sexton, who is the founder and co-owner of The District Company, asking the city council to, you know, think about the confusion when it weighs in on this issue. Just to give you a little background on that particular issue, the city council generally does not have the ability to regulate trade names when it comes to licensed alcohol establishments. And in fact, you know, I have my handbook here from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which cautions against delving into trade names when issuing licenses and instead focus on the name of the applicant who is applying for it. Part of the reason that advice is given is because they can legally change their trade name without city council approval anyway, and the fact that we don't like their trade name is not going to satisfy one of the statutory criteria for non-renewal. So to the extent communities want to delve into that above and beyond some of the First Amendment challenges, any action taken based strictly on a name would be a legal nullity because they could then go back, change the name, and there's nothing the city council could do either at the time it was changed or when the license is renewed. Obviously, you know, this is a little bit of an issue for the two businesses. It's largely a private civil dispute between those two businesses. I understand the frustration and, you know, discussed, you know, this issue with both businesses to see if there was a way of resolving this. I think their discussions are ongoing. I don't know if there is a way of resolving it, but regardless, it's largely a dispute between them that they'll have to work out either amongst themselves or in a private civil dispute. And my recommendation is that the city council not delve into that issue in determining whether or not to grant the license. Again, otherwise, at the time of license review committee meeting, there were still some items that needed to be completed for the license to be issued as far as work with city departments. They're undergoing a major remodel at that location, and so some things at that time still needed to be signed off on. And, you know, one of the expectations we have is that they'll get all approvals necessary before opening. And obviously, we also talked about monitoring their garbage situation, and that's an expectation they have as well. The applicant is here. If you have any additional operational questions.
I'll take questions for you first, Mr. Hofer. Councilmember Von Heden?
I didn't see a license review. Is this a surrender of an old license and a reissue or?
It's a surrender and transfer of the Playmakers license.
Okay. So I thought it was, but apparently I missed that and nothing. So, okay.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Hofer, I think the concern, as you touched on, is not the name, but the possibility that it's going to be confusing for underage, you know, underage residents in our community. And, you know, to me, that's an issue that we have to consider. It's about the health of our community and whether that might be something that, you know, I mean, I wouldn't, I think if it was a similar name but another establishment like, you know, The Playmakers versus Playmakers or something similar, you know, I would say that there's not a big deal there. But the possibility of it being on the same street and, you know, what about the health piece of this and how that's going to impact potentially younger residents in our community?
Understand, and the owner of The District Company, you know, raised some of those same concerns. Again, the issue is whether or not this is an area we get to legally regulate. And to the extent, even if the city council said, yes, we think there's a strong public health concern and we want, we will only approve this under a different trade name, that action would essentially be a legal nullity because if the business wanted to change the name back to The District, they could, they would not need the city council approval, and that wouldn't be grounds to non-renew a year from now. And that's a big part of the reason why I'm making the recommendation I am. Understanding, you know, those thoughts and understanding some of the frustration of the owner of The District Company, but to a large degree, it's a problem that's going to have to be worked out in the civil, you know, in the civil process.
Councilmember Tiwol?
Thank you, Council President. I want to continue on with another long thought. Is our municipality at any risk? Let's say it was a major chain, and we grant a license to somebody using that same name as that major chain. We are aware of it. I just, I'm not going to use it for instance, that statement's obvious. You know, then are we putting ourselves, why did we grant and conspire with a group to act as another major chain?
No. There's no risk of civil liability for doing that. If I came in and asked for Doug's TJI Fridays to have an alcohol license?
Or just TJI Fs. You don't even want to put Doug in front of it.
Yeah, no.
You just, you know, you're nuts. Then the second question I have, if I may. Thank you for that. Well, I understand your point on renewal, and because that wouldn't be a basis for renewing. But if we never grant it, how is it we couldn't say, you know, we're not going to grant this till this civil case is decided? Can you advise what that position might be?
Well, the city council does have broad discretion on whether to grant a license or not. Having said that, you know, in denying a license, people don't have an absolute right to a license, but there are certain statutory factors that must be met, and I don't believe this meets any of the statutory factors. And again, I worry if the sole basis for denial is the name, that it also may, you know, create some sort of problem with First Amendment issues as a prior restraint on speech. You know, in regulating areas of speech, you know, we have to make sure the city council actions are narrowly tailored to serve a compelling governmental interest. I'm not sure the circumstance even gets in the ballpark for doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question more on the lines of the parameters of the discussion once council gets to the part where we get to discuss and then vote. So I understand that it sounds like the law says if we agree that they can have the license, we certainly cannot use a criteria on the name unfortunate situation. Are we, as council members, allowed to voice our personal opinion about the unfortunate situation on the name, or is that not in our purview to speak during discussion before we vote?
I think certainly as part of your deliberation, it's something that can be discussed. Again, whether or not it can be the sole or primary criteria to deny a license, I'd have serious concerns that we, that the city council doesn't, cannot.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. And not to get into the legal weeds of this too much, but we're actually granting the license to Z Maxine, Inc.
Yes.
And is that why the doing business as can change at will?
Yes.
Because that's really not the owner of the license.
Right. The, you know, The District isn't the applicant, doesn't own the license. That LLC is the license holder, and if they want to transfer that from one LLC to another LLC, they have to come back and get city council approval. But if they want to change the trade, the trade name, they can do that at will without city council approval.
And further questions? I just had one for you, Mr. Hofer. Can you describe what is the recourse between the parties? Say a little bit more about that civil?
Well, I'd rather not delve too deeply into it, you know. Obviously, you know, you have two names, there's probably some trademark law issues at play, really kind of outside the bounds of what we're doing here today. And, you know, it's something they're, I think they may want to talk to an attorney about what both of their rights are as far as, you know, their rights to each name and whether it causes confusion and things of that nature.
I see. And secondly, you did, oh, never mind, I'm sorry. My other question was answered.
Okay.
And I see no further questions.
Council President?
Oh, Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Hofer, just, I don't believe I saw it in the packet, and wondering if you could briefly give a reminder of the criteria for transfer of license? Is it the same criteria?
Yes.
Can you remind us, or is it too lengthy? I don't believe I saw it in the packet.
I don't know if I have that. Again, there's all sorts of criteria that can be used, you know, traffic concerns, public health, I mean, location, volume of bars in the area. You know, the city does have broad discretion, again, within certain limits, whether or not to grant a license.
Thanks.
And, Mr. Hofer, the agent who is named in the resolution goes along with the license until we hear of a change of agent?
Correct. That's something they'd have to notify us.
There's some criteria as to the agent is a reputable, you know, person, and we review all those, too.
Absolutely. Exactly. The experience of the agent and owners, you know, with licensed establishment, there's a very broad list of factors that the city council can consider.
Okay. Thank you again. As is our custom, on a motion by Councilmember Tiwol, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 11 is moved and discussion is in order. We could, if someone asks, then. Councilmember Strobel?
I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Is that possible?
That is possible. And if you would state your name?
David Loren Zempel.
And your address, please.
N 5049, 553rd Street, Menominee, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Mr. Zempel?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for you. One of them on the application, the Health Department had some concerns about what you were going to do for your garbage. What are the plans for the garbage containers?
Without getting too much into, well, detail about everything, we've roughly estimated around $100,000 in remodel cost for this building. That's shared between the owner of the property and myself. And the reason that cost is shared is for, within the lease agreement, I first tried to refuse on the sale of the property. Okay? As far as garbage, it was, as described, a really bad situation walking in. In fact, the whole building could probably be described as that. What we're doing is we have a separate room down there that we're working on sealing off. It'll be down in the basement, okay? And then we're building a large industrial ramp up to the doorway there to remove the garbage. The garbage will never be held in an area or even remotely close to any food prep or any liquor storage whatsoever. Those are the things that we're going to do initially. If we have to make other changes, we obviously will.
So the garbage containers will be in the basement of the facility? They will not be on the sidewalk?
Correct. They cannot be. Yes, there is no room for that.
And whoever you contract with for garbage disposal will probably go down the basement, grab them, come out?
Yeah, there's actually a direct door at 101 Graham there. It's a fairly large building. And near that back parking lot, kind of right on Graham or right in that area, there's a walkway down and a door that we have a key to access to. And then that way, they could remove the trash from that area. So that's the tentative plan.
Okay. And then just one more thing. I mean, I'm excited to have a new restaurant down there. I'm sort of happy about that.
Great.
But my big concern is probably, along with some of my fellow council members, it has something a little bit to do with the letter we got from The District Company right down the street.
I was going to address that without even a question, so.
Okay, I'll let you do that.
Okay. Yeah, like, you know, Andrew Ast and Tim. I mean, I certainly understand everyone's concern. And I don't like, a little background on myself, I mean, I went to school at Eau Claire for criminal justice. I ended up falling into the business realm. I don't want to start off a relationship with any city that I'm doing business in in a bad way. That includes other owners. Okay? The problem with this, when I sat down with GMs at my other locations and we started planning these things, and I do searches myself, of course, I searched The District Bar, The District Grill, The District Restaurant, and nothing ever pinged. Okay? We started this process back in November, all right? So my signage for the awning and all the, like, the custom steel industrial signage I have going in the building is roughly over $25,000. I can't just be like, oh, yeah, we're going to switch things now. And I honestly had no idea. If I would have had any idea at all that this would be a problem, I never would have named it that. And I'll openly admit that. The trademark discussion that was kind of held before, I mean, I filed for a trademark on that name months ago, you know, so a federal trademark, not knowing anything. And actually, since it is in the realm of a bar and grill, it's much separate than like a gaming and soda lounge. Even if we both had trademarks, it would both be legal, as far as my understanding is. And certainly, you know, lawyers would be a lot better suited to answer that question. But kind of getting back to that question and some of your concerns, I'd much rather have this be a different conversation about who I am, what I'm doing, you know, my history in owning bars. You know, instead, it's kind of going on the name thing, and that frustrates me, and it's somewhat my fault, and I understand that, but I'm in a position where I, losing out on $25,000 after everything, I can't just really renege on it and then do new orders. It's a pretty rough burden to put on me. So that's where I'm sitting. If that kind of answers some of it.
Yes, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate, you know, the concerns of the other owner as well.
Absolutely, so do I.
Just, I just Googled The District Bar, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, and The District Company, Eau Claire, comes up on a couple of different sites right there, so.
That did not happen when I Googled it. It did not happen, and this, again, this was months ago. As far as, I don't know when they moved locations either. I know they were at another location, and then they moved down there. I don't know when that happened, but I can honestly say that I had no idea. And I wouldn't want to do this if I didn't have to, you know. I just feel kind of in a situation where we're two very separate businesses. And I understand there might be a little concern. Andrew brought up, what about the public health?
Excuse me, Mr. Zempel. When we're at city council, we address council members by Councilmember Worthman.
Okay, my bad. It was brought up that there was basically, there's an issue with possible underagers, public health, things like that happening. If I do my job, which I've proven to do for years, that's never been an issue. I think our identities are so very different, being us built around a great fish fry, which we're going to be doing on like Thursdays and Fridays because we had so much demand for it, and being kind of like a craft beer lounge and things like that, that I don't think there's going to be a lot of confusion after the start date. Okay? I would be naive to say that there wouldn't be some confusion in the beginning. But I think that I'll definitely do my best to overcome that confusion and help the process along.
Thank you, Mr. Zempel. Other questions? Thank you for informing us this evening.
You're very welcome. Yep, thanks for having me.
So discussion is still in order on the resolution to grant a license. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I actually have another question for the legal department. Thank you. I understand that we can't base the naming concerns as grounds for denial. Could we base that on, for a reason, to delay or postpone action pending, pending both parties being agreeable to the names or?
I think that the basis for delay, the legal basis for delay are the same legal basis for denial. And so the analysis for delaying action, you know, understanding the way you're putting, if I'm understanding the way you're putting the question, I think would be similar. It wouldn't be enough to say, well, we're not going to take action at this time, we'll postpone till, that would be, you know, that would legally be the same as a denial.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Tiwol?
A question for you, Council President. As we do have the other party concerned, would it be normal protocol to let, hear what they have, or is it deemed not relevant to what we've heard? If you could guide us, please.
I think it would be perfectly fine and enlightening if the other, the other district, The District Company actually, is prepared and wishes to make any sort of statement. We, I'll just remind us all that we have a very high standard of civility, and we expect that of ourselves and everyone in this room.
Sure. So Tim Sexton, founder, co-owner, District Company at 315 Graham Avenue. Prior location was at 305 Barstow, and prior to that, we were at 224 North Dewey Street. Thank you for letting me speak. The District Company, also known as The District to many, is a all-ages cafe. We do have a district cafe, so we do serve food. We also are a family-friendly environment where children, adults, all ages can come and be entertained through the use of board games. We pride ourselves on a safe, sober, and secure environment. People come from all over, and, you know, we talk about spending money. We've spent a lot of money ourselves to get to where we're at. And whether it's on Facebook and social media, or, you know, in the phone book or whatever it may be, I mean, it's out there for everyone to see, The District Company. We do believe that it's going to create a lot of confusion, and we're very concerned about the children. We want the best for Mr. Zempel, of course we do. As soon as I found out by one of his painters that they were going to name themselves The District, I went down to his location, and on June 1st, as soon as I received his phone number, I called him up immediately. And I engaged in discussion and let him know how this is going to add to a lot of confusion and how the state of Wisconsin does look at simplifying that confusion for the consumer. And yes, I understand DBA is, you know, open to doing basically whatever you want with the name, but it does add a tremendous amount of confusion for the consumer. And I would hate to have people saying, we're going to come to The District, we're going to look them up online, and all of a sudden, they find a bar now and think that we're closed. Well, they must have decided to do something else. I mean, instead of being a family-friendly environment that is safe, sober, and secure for all ages. So we want the best for Mr. Zempel and his business, but at that time, when we talked on the phone, he was open to looking at the alternatives he had indicated to me. He was going to contact the city, I believe, at that time, and he was going to call me back on the Monday following our discussion on Thursday. It's been over a month, and I never received any phone call from him or any type of information back. So I did reach out, I tried to create the discussion, but again, we did not receive any information back for, even for us to take any type of action if that was the case. I went down to his place of business repeatedly. I reached out and could not get ahold of him. So that's kind of where we're at. Again, we feel like it's a health and welfare situation to consider. We feel like in the downtown environment, there's plenty of bars down there, there's plenty of liquor being served, but there's not too many family-friendly establishments. I think that we should be given some precedence. I think that we should be given some precedence for offering a family-friendly environment and atmosphere where people can come to downtown Eau Claire and enjoy themselves, and not just be down there with a bar on every location or place that serves alcohol. I think what we provide to the city and our growth has demonstrated that we are a vital part of this community, growing from 800 square feet to over 8,000 square feet in a matter of four years, winning best place, or best business of, uh, uh, with volume one to best place for gamers, to being nominated for best place for an all-age hangout. We are known as the district company, we want to protect our name, but we also want to protect, uh, having a safe, sober, and secure environment for all children, and we have touched lives tremendously, and it saddens me that our name could be pulled through the mud as a result of having a place, another place, downtown Eau Claire, that can serve alcohol. So, I respectfully and would encourage you to consider how this is going to affect downtown Eau Claire, the health of the children, and the well-being of our community, but also monetarily, how it's going to affect us much more than $25,000 that it costs for a sign, especially when it should have been on him in order to make due diligence and recognize that two blocks down the street, there's a place called the district company, and we are in the same business, and that's building community. I appreciate your time, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a moment to respond?
No, you can.
Okay.
The, the protocol, I've stretched protocol, um, enough, and respectfully, we have heard both sides of this, and respectfully, I deny your request. Discussion. We, we do have the resolution on, it's moved, it's on the floor. Councilmember Tewol.
Thank you, Council President. My question for council is to wonder if we should ask the question of, to look at density and see if we are wanting to increase or hold where we're at. If I understand, the council and previous councils limited the Water Street growth, I think when the, I believe it was the Pickle was applying, they had a problem with due to expansion in their type of license, they, they can't have a new establishment on that street, are we at that point with our downtown area where we have a density that is what we consider healthy, or are we, uh, are we lacking in a number of places, or should we have more places? Maybe that might be something we explore.
Mr. Hofer, are you prepared to talk about the Water Street Business District in regard to?
Well, I can talk on the issue of density in, in the downtown, obviously, that's something the License Review Committee examines on every application, it's my understanding the police department did not have any concerns that this would, that another alcohol, licensed alcohol establishment at that location would be a problem, in part because it's replacing an existing licensed alcohol establishment, but that, that, that particular part of downtown, that was not a concern raised by the police department or any other city departments, that it would put a strain on city resources or otherwise be problematic.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President.
But I, one thing I will add, it is a valid concern that we, that we look at, and certainly something the city council can consider.
Um, we have had discussions, Council President, may I speak? Thank you, uh, we have had discussions in the past year to year and a half about density in the Water Street area, uh, and so that is a part of our discussion for, for, you know, for council to consider. I think one of the things that I understand is that we do have broad latitude on this, and, um, you know, I've received input that requests that we not accept this, and I think, um, one of the things that strikes me is just the, the impact on health, and naming, names aside, um, I have a deep concern about, um, you know, about kids being able to access or potentially getting confused or going to the wrong location, um, and, uh, you know, to me, that's something that we have to weigh up, um, you know, and, and I think on top of it is, is what is our, what is our community want? What does our community value? Um, you know, those are other pieces to this, um, as we decide a liquor license, it's not just those strict, uh, criteria, it is whether our community thinks this is a good step in the right direction, that this is something that benefits us, um, you know, and I think we have to kind of weigh that up. So I think tonight I won't be voting for it, but, um, you know, I understand, you know, there's a difficult decision ahead of us, as are, you know, a lot of the liquor licenses and transfers that we've had in the past, these are often difficult decisions, so, uh, I respect all the different opinions of council members.
Any further, oh, Councilmember Welsch.
Thank you, Council President, in regards to the density, I, you know, I have some concerns in that, if that's going to be the reasoning for our denial, um, you know, I think if you look at the Haymarket Building and the Confluence Project, that, you know, I'm guessing they have at least one or two spaces earmarked in that building for restaurants in the future, um, which would involve a request for a liquor license, I would imagine, you know, all the continued development that's going on in the Phoenix Park area, or if we do something in the, the bus terminal area, that I, I'm envisioning we're going to see more applications for restaurants with, with alcohol licenses, so I think if we're going to set the precedent now and say, we're at our, our max, you know, we can't take anymore, um, with the density concern, then I, I think that's going to make it difficult for future businesses to, to participate in that area. Um, I, I, I can't argue with, with the concern, I agree with it 100%, that there is going to be confusion, and I think that, that the district company has earned their right to, to keep their name, but I don't know how legally we do this, I guess we'd look to the staff for another alternative besides density.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you, and, and I, I think that we may want to consider the density issue for the downtown area, but I don't think we can do that tonight, I think that if we're going to do that, it should be a separate discussion, and we should make some decisions, as was done on Water Street, so that people that want to have businesses have a heads up, and especially in this case of where it's a, a replacement, uh, a surrender of a liquor license, um, I don't think that it's fair to use density as a criteria in this case.
Councilmember Strobel.
Um, and, and I, I'm not sure, I, I disagree with that, um, in this case either, I, I wonder if, if my fellow council members would consider a postponement and, and possibility of, of the parties getting together, um, and giving us a little more time to, to consider whether we approve or disapprove of the transfer, and I guess I'm looking for input from fellow council members.
Councilmember Strobel is testing the waters on a postponement after we ask that question of legal counsel, so. Councilmember Van Haden.
Right. This is a very difficult situation from the standpoint of the name, but unfortunately, as our city attorney explained to us, that is an issue that is not before us in relationship of the issuing of the liquor license. The liquor license is one thing, and if, if the name is an issue, that is a matter between the two individual companies out there on how they resolve that, and it's really not our purview to make that as an, as a criteria. Now, if we can come up with another criteria to talk about it, and the same thing on delaying it, postponing it, we don't have a basis for it, it's the, the same argument that we are using on the basis of the whole license, so I think we have to make the decision just to go forward and either say yes or no.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President, I have another question for the legal department. Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Sure.
Could you please review on what grounds or what merit this should be considered, or, in another way to look at it, what grounds would be appropriate for denying this?
Sure. Here's a list, uh, you know, again, this is, I'm reading from the, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities summary, but I think it's a good summary, it says, "Valid reasons for denial of a retail license are based on concern for the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Possible reasons for denial include adverse impact on traffic, adverse impact on the peace, quiet, and cleanliness of the neighborhood where the establishment is located, insufficient parking for patrons, proximity to other licensed establishments, residential areas, schools, churches, or hospitals, ability or inability of the police to provide law enforcement services to the new establishment, and the impact of the new establishment on the ability of the police to provide law enforcement services to the balance of the community at all times." Additionally, I think it's, it's reasonable for you to consider the experience and background of the applicant and agent, as we discussed, but generally, those kinds of, um, public health, safety concerns, public well-being, public welfare concerns, that's not a, an exhaustive list by any stretch, but it, it's a pretty fair summary of some of the criteria that you're permitted to look at.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you, and, and if it helps, if we look at the minutes of the License Review Committee, we see that this is a restaurant primarily, and if it, at some time in the future, the license holder decides that it will operate as a tavern instead, then they have to come back for a conditional use permit, and that's where we look at, uh, the problem, other problems, for example, like density, and if I'm correct, the Water Street, uh, provisions have to do with taverns, not just with giving liquor licenses, so on Water Street, we can still open another restaurant with a liquor license, just can't add taverns, is that correct? Yeah.
And at the request of the Water Street Business District, besides. Councilmember Tewol.
A question for council, could they clarify, I think I, for, for city attorney, um, if the agent changes, then the license would have to go through reapproval?
My understanding, and I, I know I've talked with our city clerk about this, if, if there's an agent change, there is a notification that's necessary, and I believe that goes through on the consent agenda typically.
And?
So to answer your question, yes, the city council does approve a change of agent.
Okay, but, but we want to get the background of that operator if it's in the consent, would we?
It, it depends, there are times, you know, where, um, you know, they do come through license review, and it is on the business agenda, there are times where administratively we look at it and make a determination to put it on the.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, could I ask a question? Uh, Mr. Hofer, could you remind me of the Water Street situation with, I believe it's the Woodnaught, is it the Woodnaught?
Correct.
Uh, they were a restaurant with a liquor license? I'm just trying to recall.
I see Attorney Nick, uh.
But, but if I recall, the, the liquor, the, the review, License Review Committee recommended nonapproval based on, uh, density was one of the issues, um, but I don't believe they were just a tavern, they were a similar, they were similar to this establishment, is that correct?
Yes, they were applying as a restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Strobel.
Okay, um, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Mitchell, that, that it seems like it's going to be 70% food sales, and, and it's, it's really more of a, more of a restaurant than a bar tavern in this situation, I, I'd have a hard, I would have a hard time denying on, on those grounds, I think, um, but I, I really, the, the situation with the name, I, I know what we heard from legal and, and all that, and, and I would certainly kind of wonder if, if we would be having this whole detailed conversation if that wasn't part of the problem, you know, and so I, I guess I'm, I'm still thinking about offering a postponement to see if, if it couldn't come back somehow differently, and if council supports that, they do, if, if they don't, they don't, but, um, so I'm going to offer a motion to postpone.
To a time certain?
Uh... When?
90 days, three months.
90 days, I mean, that's a long time out, though, I mean, if someone wants to open a business, I think that'd be too long, so I mean, if they can come to an agreement, they should be able to come to an agreement in two weeks or, or 30 days.
Two weeks.
What, I'll, I'll defer to somebody at second, so.
Uh, no, you have to see.
Um, I would like to postpone for a period of two weeks.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, you're okay with that? Two weeks till our next council meeting, and is there a second?
I would second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Welsch. Discussion is now in order on the motion to postpone, amended, to amend the resolution as, on, with a motion to postpone, I guess.
I've got it.
Councilmember Tewol.
I appreciate the intent of this motion, um, I really think it's been made clear, and, and I've, in previous votes, I don't support council going outside its reach and other statements, and I think this is, our city attorneys have pointed out where we stand with the law, and so I won't be supporting a postponement for that reason.
Further discussion, uh, Councilmember Welsch.
Thank you, Council President, and I, and I can agree, I don't want to see us spend a lot of time with, you know, legal matters that really end up where we started, I guess my hope, and possibly Councilmember Strobel's, is that the two parties would agree to meet and work this out without having to go through the legal process to do so, and if, if it's that simple, that maybe the two parties could do that, and, and it's a problem fix, and maybe we just need to give them a little bit of time to do that, but I can't argue, I, I agree, let's, let's not approve something or delay something that's inevitable either, legally, anyway.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President, I am going to support this, this evening, on the basis of we're all trying our best here, everybody comes to the table with good intentions, and it became a complicated issue, and, um, so it's under the spirit of trying our best, and that's what we get to do in local government, is offer our best, so I'll support it.
Okay, further discussion on the most, motion to postpone for two weeks, there being none clerk, please call the roll, and I vote orders of postponement. Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Kincaid. Clay Cameron.
No.
Mitchell.
No.
Strobel.
Aye.
Tewol.
No.
Van Haden.
No.
Welsch.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Beaton.
Uh, no, and that motion fails on a tie, a five to five vote, so we're back to the resolution before us without amendment.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you, um, I first wanted to say thank you for, both of you for presenting, um, I frequently use the district company when you were on Barstow, and I'm really thankful that we have that kind of resource in our community for children and adults of all ages, um, I'm also really excited to see a, a new restaurant come to downtown, especially with the Confluence Project, I think it'll be a good thing, um, I, I think it's unfortunate that we have to have this conversation, and, um, I think that, I think all of us would prefer it not to be like this, um, however, I don't know that we have the legal authority to, um, deny this request for a liquor license, or, or transfer, rather, um, I also, you know, I hear the concerns about, um, children and, and the confusion, uh, though I don't, I'm not sure that I can imagine, um, you know, a 12-year-old walking into a bar and thinking it's a gaming place, and staying there and throwing back a few, you know, I, I don't know that, that's really, um, truly going to happen, um, I think that there may be some, uh, confusion between businesses, and it may impact the businesses themselves, but I think that we already have, um, I can think of one instance, at least between two businesses in our city, that there is confusion between, um, the local store and just local foods, um, I hear that confusion a lot, where people, you know, I'll be talking about one, and somebody will think, you know, think I'm talking about the other, and typically, it's, um, a simple, you know, clarification for people when I'm talking about those businesses, at least, and I know that, you know, it's hard to compare, compare these two instances, but I, what I'm... But I, what I'm saying is, I think that maybe there will be some confusion, but I hope that the community will sort it out, or that these two businesses might be able to sort it out amongst themselves, because I don't know that I can deny this liquor license just solely based on that.
And Councilmember Von Hayden?
And I think one of the things that can be done here is, we have the media with the Facebook, et cetera, and if both businesses properly define their Facebook page, it'll clarify it. So if somebody pulls it up on the thing and takes a look at it, and it says the District Company, they're going to see it's for the purpose of the gaming and the other things that are appropriate for the younger people. And if the play, or the other establishment shows it as a fish fry and a bar, I don't see where we're going to have a huge amount of confusion on the media. But I think it is important that they recognize it and try to clarify as much as possible so that they do eliminate any of the confusion.
And further discussion. There being none, the chair will briefly say that I will be voting no. I do find a compelling public health concern. I find it has met, for me, that has met the bar for denying on the, on a basis of a concern for public health. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Kincaid?
No.
Click Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Wall?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
No.
And that resolution passes, seven to three. Item 12, the next item on our business agenda is a resolution authorizing the Eau Claire Sports Commission to conduct the USA Softball Northern Nationals opening reception and tournament on August 6th through, or, 2nd through the 6th. Mr. Pippinger?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
The special event application before you is a new event. The USA Softball Northern Nationals is an event being sponsored by the Eau Claire Sports Commission. This event will occur on Wednesday, August 2nd, with opening ceremonies to be held at Glynn Field in Carson Park. The tournament will commence on Thursday, August 3rd, and will finish on Sunday, August 6th. The games will be played at the new Jeffers Park ballfields and expected to draw approximately 40 teams in the 10 U and 12 U age groups. This event will require city council approval due to the expectation of more than 1,000 spectators. The Special Events Committee recommended approval of this event at our June 14th meeting. Additionally, the Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval at our June 28th meeting. Ms. Colleen Weber from the Eau Claire Sports Commission is here to answer any questions, and as usual, I'll be happy to answer any questions, too.
Questions for Mr. Pippinger or Ms. Weber? I see none tonight. Thank you. Sounds like an exciting event, and, thank you. Let's see, on a resolution by Councilmember Click Hammer, seconded by Councilmember Von Hayden, the special event is moved. I did forget to ask Ms. Weber if you'd like to speak to your event. You don't, the invitation's there, you don't have to.
I don't need to appreciate your attendance.
Sure. Okay. I think we have the resolution moved and seconded, then. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Click Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Wall?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Skateboarder Association in regards to the installation of a skate plaza at Boyd Park. Mr. Pippinger?
Before the city council is a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Eau Claire and the Boyd Park Skate Plaza Group. This memorandum of understanding is for the Boyd Park Skate Plaza Group to fundraise for the construction of a skate plaza at Boyd Park. The Boyd Park Skate Plaza Group will be required to fundraise for the entire cost of the project, which is estimated to be approximately $75,000 in cash, before the city will commence any construction of the project. Additionally, the group will be required to provide funds for the ongoing upkeep and repair of the project. The group has been working with the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association, and they are in support of this project. This memorandum of understanding includes the responsibilities of the city and the Boyd Park Skate Group, capital campaign, and terms of the agreement. The Department of Community Service staff finds that this partnership will be beneficial to the parties as a whole by creating a new amenity within the park. The Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval of this agreement at their June 28th meeting. I do have a couple of folks from the Skate Group, and also Mr. Mark Ruddy from the East Hill Neighborhood Association are here to answer any questions you might have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, too.
Questions, Councilmember Von Hayden?
Is there sufficient space there for all the things so that we don't impact the ice skating in the wintertime and these other functions that we normally have out there?
Absolutely, yes. And we, we haven't gotten into the point of site planning yet for it, but we, one of the concerns has been that we don't want to remove the skating. It's something that's pretty near and dear for the East Hill neighborhood, and we're going to make sure that that happens, that we don't disrupt that.
Again, you stated the East Hill, or the representative is here to give us a comment on, and that they've reviewed it and don't have any objections to it.
Yes. The concept of the project, again, we don't have a site plan yet, and they will be involved in that process also.
Councilmember Mitchell? Thank you. Does this, does this require technically a site plan that would go through Waterways, Plan Commission, City Council?
Definitely the Waterways and Parks. As far as Plan Commission, I would have to check to see, because it's concrete, and I would have to check with Darrell, see if that would be a requirement of the, of the Plan Commission. Of course, if, I mean, we certainly can bring it through to that commission also. There would be no problem with that.
Well, no, not if you don't have to. I wouldn't. [laughing]. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. And as a former president of the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association, I'm sure Mr. Ruddy, when he comes up, will mention as well, it's not the East Hill, it's the Eastside Hill, so.
I may have misspoke on that.
Yes, sir. My question for you, the, the previous skateboard park we built in, at Half Moon, had some commitments from the skateboarders. They were going to contribute to that. Do you know how that, how that shook out as far as those contributions, and is that maybe why we're doing something a little more official this time with this letter of understanding?
Yes. To answer your question, there, there was a resolution by the council at, at the time that the skate group, skateboard group would raise the funds to construct the Lakeshore Park Plaza Skate Group, and that was for them to raise all the money. In checking, there, there was approximately $17,000 that was raised for the project. The project did go into about $60,000 in cost. The remainder of those costs were picked up by the city.
And one follow-up question as well, if I can remember what it was. I did get a, one or two emails, just some inquiries about it, and the public, at the time you cite this, will have some chances to have some input on, on some of it as well, right?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll have open houses. We got a great warming house down in that area that we can have a open house and have all the folks down there, that we can have a site plan and get input from the, from the neighborhoods.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pippinger? Though the skateboard park would be located in Boyd Park, it would be open to the whole city.
Absolutely.
Just like the one at Lakeshore. So it is a, it's a public amenity.
That's correct.
That we're getting some help in building, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Pippinger? Thank you.
Okay.
Let's see, on a motion then by Councilmember, where am I? Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Strobel? Item 13 is moved, and discussion is in order. Councilmember Worthman?
Thanks, Council President. Kincaid, I just want to tip my hat to Mr. Pippinger and, and Mr. Ruddy, who's here this evening, and I also received a call from Gabe Brummitt, whom any of us know, is a longtime community member, but also someone who's been a strong advocate for skate parks. He wasn't able to make it tonight because of work, but he wanted to, you know, just say how thankful he is of past council support of skateboarding and the possibility for this. And so I want to just say thank you to the skateboarder community today for bringing this forward, and excited, you know, to hopefully see this move forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Can we hear from the people?
Mm-hmm. Just as a reminder, during our legislative session, when council members ask to hear from applicants or the public, most times that is granted. It's different than Monday night. So since we had a request to hear from the applicant, I'm, I'm happy to grant that. Oftentimes, it helps us, we learn, learn a lot. So if you would like to approach the podium and state your, your name?
My name is Melinda Abear, and I live at 1621 Russ Street.
And my name is Noah Abear, and I also live at the same address.
I do want to thank everyone for your cooperation and the partnership we've built so far, and the possible partnership that we can build with the city. We realize that the city went to bat and helped us out with the skate park at Lakeshore, and we feel that it is our responsibility to try to raise the entire amount, to put this, move this park forward. It just shows the commitment that we have as parents and as skaters, that it is a sport. It's coming to the Olympics in 2020, and it really is a good thing for underserved populations and everything else, and I think it's, it's just really great that it's a goal for the city to welcome these kinds of activities, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any further statements?
Yep. I just wanted to give you an update that we have, between pledges and cash on hand, we've raised $32,000 so far, so we're chugging along, so. Thank you.
Any further discussion, then?
Can we hear from the Eastside Hill, please?
And Councilmember Von Hayden requested that we hear from Mr. Ruddy of the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association. Mr. Ruddy?
Hi, I'm Mark Ruddy. Live at 1016 Dodge Street, here in the city. As a steering committee member for our association, we have always consistently felt that this is appropriate for our park, and we want to do everything we can to foster it. So it's got our support. We've dealt with it on our monthly meetings, and also we had a special neighborhood forum where people could come and ask their questions. The naysayers at the start of that meeting were won over, and there, and since that time, there, there have been no, there's been no discussion before our board brought to our attention that there was a concern in the neighborhood. So we're totally behind it. As a, as an individual, I'm voting for my skateboarder son and my skateboarder grandson who's seven. So thanks for your considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddy. Okay, there being no further discussion, then, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Wall?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Thank you. Item 14 is a resolution approving the intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the City of Eau Claire and the Town of Washington for London Road construction costs into 2017. Mr. Solberg?
Good afternoon. The resolution you have before you approves the intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the City of Eau Claire and Town of Washington for this section of London Road. Damon Street is to the south, Session Street is to the north. This project was approved by the city council earlier this year as part of our 2017 CIP The Exhibit A in your packet shows the area that is the responsibility of the City of Eau Claire, which is the solid black line. The dash line lies within the Town of Washington. You should have before you a substitute agreement. We received a feedback from the Town of Washington after the council packet was approved to include two items that we did not have an issue with. The first was to detail in the agreement the language from Exhibit B, that details the cost share responsibilities, into a formula in Item 4. And then Item 10 spells out that if any portion of the right-of-way that lies within the Town of Washington, this dash line, that they are paying for their construction costs in access to the City of Eau Claire within the next 10 years, the city would reimburse them a prorated portion of that stretch of street. That language has been included historically with our agreements that we've had with the Town of Washington in the past, so that was included in as Item Number 10 also. The agreement with the Town of Washington states that the City of Eau Claire will act as the project lead. We will perform the design and construction administration for the project. The City of Eau Claire will pay for the costs of the street and street sections within the city limits of the City of Eau Claire, as well as all the sidewalk and the water main and sanitary sewer, which are city utilities. The Town of Washington will pay for the street construction that lies within their jurisdiction. That is approximately 13% of the right-of-way. The total dollar amounts contained in the agreement as estimates spell out that $435,000 will be the responsibility of the City of Eau Claire, and approximately $61,000 the responsibility of the town. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solberg? Item 10 is, we're okay with that?
Yeah, it's been used historically in the, in the past. I don't have, I don't have a high confidence that, that will annex anytime soon, but we do also, on that stretch of roadway, our special assessments are deferred, so if it, if it were to annex the city and we had a reimbursement with the Town of Washington, the special assessments for the streets are still deferred. So it would be treated like any other, like the rest of London Road, where the city would pay for a portion of that, so.
For, for 10 years?
For 10 years. And it decreases every year for 10 years, so it's a prorated portion. And then after 10 years, the special assessments would still be deferred. If it annex 20 years from now, those special assessments would be applied at that time.
Thank you. I see no further questions, and thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember, let's see, where am I? Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. Item 14 is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
T. Wall?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Click Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 15 is a resolution approving professional services, a professional services proposal from Design Studios ETC to begin the final design of Haymarket Plaza and construction bid documents. Mr. Solberg?
Okay. We are in the middle of construction season for this year, but we're already planning construction season for next year. So we'll finish this year's first. The resolution before you approves the proposal for professional services for master plan and construction document assistance by Design Studios, et cetera, for Haymarket Plaza. City of Eau Claire staff will perform, or will compile the construction documents and bid the project, but we do need additional help from a landscape architect when it comes to the, the parts of the plaza that we are not as expert in the design of, such as fountains, landscaping, and so forth. So the proposal before you would provide those services to city staff to develop construction documents based upon this concept plan, master plan that was unveiled earlier this year for Haymarket Plaza. Haymarket Uh, Haymarket Plaza has been planned for, uh, over eight years to be, uh, converted from an existing, uh, parking lot at the location of the confluence of the Eau Claire and Chippewa Rivers into a public place. This master plan that we have is a culmination of approximately eight years' worth of feedback and concepts and iteration and reiteration and working with stakeholders. The, the, I'll go through the inclusions of what is in the concept and then, uh, what the schedule is going forward. Um, we, we tried to balance with the, the plaza, um, the different uses that, that were provided to us from feedback with the public, uh, process over the, the last few years, and also with the placemaking exercise. So, we've included trails, uh, interactive water features, uh, a public deck, um, opportunity for viewing of the rivers, as well as a large flat area that would provide, uh, space for small events. If the, the interactive water feature were to be turned off, uh, there would be a small gathering of a, a small band or a performance at this location. And then also with this, the flat area of the plaza also, um, does provide an opportunity for a large event, even though it was not, um, a primary focus during the design or the, the concept phase. Um, the flat area of the plaza that is consistent, that consists of pavers and some functional grass that is flat and it's, it's a type of grass that you can set, uh, tables on or other chairs or whatnot. It's about the same size as was recently used for the, um, Oxbow, uh, event that was, that closed Galloway Street. So, on the flat areas of the plaza, uh, as, um, um, if it were used as a large event, could accommodate up to two thousand people, for, as was noted for the, the, uh, Blue Ox, or the Oxbow Festival. So, we, we tried to include in the plaza with the concepts that we have here, um, use of the area from the, the Confluence Arts Center, Haymarket Landing. We have opportunities for people to rest and sit, um, for, uh, having a lunch if you're an employee or if you're visiting downtown, um, if you're visiting after the library. So, what this plan is, is a thirty thousand foot concept plan. And we try to include as many different users for the plaza as possible. And, uh, the services contract that we have before you help us refine this plan into what will be a final plan and a working document, um, for us to bid. Um, it will include a couple of months' worth of effort for further refining this effort into the final design, uh, for working with the Confluence Arts Center in the area along the plaza that is their right-of-way and how it blends in with the plaza, as well as the Haymarket Landing Building. Uh, some of the details that are yet to be worked out will be how a bridge that we're working on to try and cross the Eau Claire River ties in, so, there may be some refinements here. But by and large, the concept that you see here with water features, fire feature inclusions, uh, the ability to accommodate large events, smaller events, uh, reflect on the river, access to the water, um, is what we're proposing to be refined into a final set of construction documents. Uh, this, this concept master plan was presented to the Waterways and Parks Commission in June and was, uh, approved. Um, if the proposal for professional services is approved tonight, um, we will work towards final bid documents and a final plan for Haymarket Plaza that will then go before Waterways and Parks Committee, Commission later this year, and then also the Plan Commission later this year, and hopefully be bid early next year. And then, um, wrapping up construction, uh, about this time next year, hopefully, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Von Hayden.
Just a general question, and that is, um, looking at the costs, that's associated, estimated costs associated with the project. Did we do an RFP on this, or was this just an individual selection process?
Um, this was an individual selection for, uh, the, we had RFPs to help with master plans prior to this. So, we used the same firm that helped us get to this point because they had a familiarity with the project. Um, it is under our procurement, um, policy guidelines of thirty thousand dollars where it goes to open. So, this is something that was appropriate and was, um, it, it would, it will be a better product to have the same firm finish it that started it with us, with those details.
Okay, so you're estimating that the cost of twenty-three, that the, the additional add-on cost won't exceed the thirty thousand?
Correct, yes.
And so, therefore, we don't need to bid it?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Mr. Solberg, uh, what, can you tell me? Cause I know this is an area that has flooded in the past. I remember this parking lot being underwater. Is this design, uh, able to accommodate flooding, or what would happen in that case?
Uh, the, the way that it's laid out, uh, prelimi- preliminary narrowly, the, the flat elevated portion of the plaza is above the hundred-year flood elevation, so, it wa- it will not flood. Um, the elevations in this area, we are accurate at the plaza at these two locations. It dips down slightly, about three feet in the middle. Uh, in the past fifty years, that would have been eclipsed, uh, twice, I believe. So, by and large, the entire plaza, where you would sit will be out of the water unless we have a, a greater than a hundred-year event. If this were to become inundated, then the trail would be rerouted like we do with several of our other trails in downtown through the plaza in around. But it, it'll be very rare that the plaza will be underwater except for the stair access that goes down.
Okay, I'm, I'm, there's quotes around, "It will not flood," so.
Well.
But, but just, yeah, we, I mean, we had a thousand-year flood event in Ashland, um, so, obviously, that's just something to think about. Um, you know, that was last year, um, but just something to think about in, in terms of the design of it, just being able to withstand that possible, possibility. Cause one hundred-year floods are happening a lot more often than a hundred years now, so.
Yeah, the, the one issue, well, um, if we do have a thousand-year event, the water will be shallower here than it will be in other areas of the city.
Councilmember Tewol.
Perhaps a question more closer than a thousand years or a hundred. Um, I just want to ask, this is a procedural question. When we create a space like this, do we already have the ordinances and policies in place? I believe in the unveiling, there was talk, "This is not an area for bicycling, motorcycles, skateboarding, playing racquetball." This has a park type. Do we have to, before we approve something like this, add that to it? Because, as I understood, it was a large pedestrian area, and we want to make sure it works for that. So, there would be bike parking somewhere on the sides or whatever, or, can you kind of speak to that use? So, is there something we should?
Well, well, as far as use, it would, it would be a, a public plaza, or it would be covered by the parks. Um, we do have a bike trail and did plan for bike accommodations along, uh, the, the riverfront. Um, there are, there are areas of the city that are prohibited for riding bicycles on sidewalk, uh, by ordinance in some of the downtown areas, uh, for safety reasons. This area is not covered in that ordinance, so, you could technically ride a bicycle through here like you can ride a bicycle through Phoenix Park unless we wanted to specifically designate areas, um, that were prohibited by bicycles. We have not done so, so far with, uh, our development of getting the physical infrastructure in. There are a number of discussions that we'll be having with our community services, um, uh, department as far as policies for when the fire would be lit, what hours for splash pads, um, tables, what, you know, what type of tables are in here, where they're stored, and so forth. So, if, if there was a discussion of the operational policies and ordinances to govern the activities inside, um, that would be something that we would, we would be able to undertake between now and, and June of next year.
So, as you work through the process, that'll reveal itself or not, if it's needed?
Correct, we haven't put any specific limitations on here yet.
Thank you.
And further questions? Uh, Councilmember Strobel.
You probably just answered that in this, in, in that question, but it, it sure looks like sort of a big skateboard park to me as well, so. And in deference to our skateboarders, um, it's kind of tough downtown sometimes. They'd like to, they'd like to grind on some of those things and, and that. Do we, do we know if we're going to consider something like that?
As far as prohibiting or discouraging, some, some of the design features, um, are specifically picked to discourage skateboarders. It was interesting, at one of the open houses that we had for down here, um, there was a discussion with somebody that, that attended the meeting about how when you have places like this and you have skateboarders that come down, they're initially seen as, um, not welcome and, and not, you would fit into an area like this. But then, more and more, they're accepted and a sign of vibrancy, and it's a sign of activity, and they're seen as more of a positive than a detriment. So, that is something that we are consciously looking at. It was looked at with Phoenix Park with some of the inclusions and materials that you use for rocks and, and seating surfaces and railing to try and make it look nice and discourage that, if that's what you want to attempt. But, yeah, that was something that was brought up, that it is, it is flat, it's not Phoenix Park. Even the, the grass on here is different from the grass on Phoenix Park where it'll be like a turf, or it'll be a harder turf, but it'll be green. Um, you could actually take the grass out and replace it with pavers, it'll be that, um, that level. But we haven't, we haven't brought, again, with the, the bicycles, any kind of ordinance prohibiting that activity right now.
I just, um, I, I know in Phoenix Park, uh, I know that, since my time on the council, we've had staff come back and, and sort of talk about some of the amenities there that we're, we're suffering a little bit from the, uh, the skateboard use, and they had to retrofit those. So, I guess maybe just in the design of this, if we're at least considering that, so, that's all.
Yep, in, in all of the design for the seating areas where, where the fire are, and also the rocks, those are all the, the features that we will be refining during final design. You know, perhaps this isn't a rock that you could launch a skateboard off, perhaps it's a more iron, um, type, um, Do More fifty-eight bench, which are the type of benches we have throughout our parks. Um, so, those will be details that we will work through as, as well as the other inclusions.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Solberg, thanks for bringing this forward. Um, I have a question about maybe some type of signage or some way to communicate with park users and folks who might stop by, just a little bit of the history of the space. And also the, I think the significant public input that was put into this design process, including the placemaking exercise. In my opinion, I always thought that this was the perfect place to have the plaza, and it was the people's plaza right in the middle of, um, really a, a catalytic moment for downtown Eau Claire. Do you envision that there will be some type of narrative that will be there for people to enjoy and learn from?
Well, I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what it will look like. Um, I know some of the, the details that go into the plaza that will adorn it are art features, and these are just representative here. Um, some of the historical aspects, uh, not only for, um, like the development of this area, but back to a hundred, hundred and fifty years, whether, you know, for the lumbering era of Eau Claire, uh, these seating surfaces were intended, um, at a first shot of trying to somehow, from, from above, represent the logs floating down the river. So, um, history is something that is to be, um, intended to be included in here. I guess we haven't really thought, you know, if we have a, an interpretive panel like we have, like you see in the National Park, or, um, how that would play out. But it certainly has been a, a long process and a very, um, dynamic process for the last eight years. And the different concepts that, uh, were first looked at in this area, um, none of them look alike, but they all have elements in each other. So, I think that would, that would be something to somehow pay tribute to, but I'm not sure exactly how.
Councilmember Tewol.
Thank you, Council President. This might be a, a query to make an amendment or direct by council. So, I, I remember at the unveiling, uh, I think both I and Councilmember Emanuel spoke about having some sort of marking that said "Eau Claire," some sort of. So, when we develop our town and they take the picture of this area, it says that. The designer did, s- did not directly say that that was going to be in it, but I'm wondering as a council if we want to have somewhere where we have the signage that this is Eau Claire, or EC, or something, um, and if this would be the place we, probably before we approve it, give a directive. Anyone, if anyone supports that idea, I guess that's really a question I, I know to any council members if they agree. If maybe now's the time to speak up or we move on. Is that fair, Council President?
Yeah, um, we haven't moved the item yet, so, now that you've laid your, you've laid your question out there, there, um, I think we can take that up during our discussion period. Sure.
Would you like?
Comment?
I was just saying that there is a combination of pavers and concrete. So, I mean, for, for possible options, paver patterns within the interactive splash pad around a, a border. One thing that we were looking at, the, the, the wall that would go along the river, um, will have the same form liner that you see in Phoenix Park and at the Haymarket Landing Building. It's a, a random ashler. We were looking at to see if you had different reliefs potentially on some of those blocks. If you could get a shadow effect, so you could have, you know, the Confluence or Haymarket or something that would show up along the wall. So, there are, um, possibilities. I don't know exactly, um, how or where to fit it in, but there would be opportunities if there was a brand that was, um, desired to look in there to try and subtly, um, sneak it in without, you know, like a neon Eau Claire or something like that. Or maybe neon, I mean.
There is something between subtle and neon.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Lots of good ideas. We're very appreciative of your work and your departments, of course. Okay. Uh, on a motion then by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Tewol, item fifteen is moved. We, we could take up Councilmember Tewol's suggestion, um, if you care to discuss the, um, directive of including the words "Eau Claire" somewhere prominently in the plaza. Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President, and good memory, Councilmember Tewol. I think my inspiration was being in Brooklyn, where on one side it said "Oi," and then when you're on the Manhattan side, it says "Yo." And we don't have that same coolness necessarily with the "Oi" and the "Yo." However, it's very clever on the branding. Uh, I, I still think it's a good idea to try to brand us. Um, I, my part of the discussion would indicate, I think it's a good conversation to talk with Visit Eau Claire about as well because they are going to have that downtown presence around the corner, and part of their business is in branding our community and our name. So, maybe they, they want to have input, um, maybe they don't, but I think that it's a good, I, if, if there was a, enough of a consensus to say, "Yeah, let's see what we can do," I wouldn't, I would encourage a conversation with Visit Eau Claire as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution itself? We do not have a formal motion to amend the resolution, uh, though, if I might, just venture to say, there doesn't seem to be a groundswell of support for said motion. However, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I don't necessarily doubt your, uh, perception, but I will test the waters to verify, and then we can say. I make a motion to, um, uh, give a directive from council to examine with Visit Eau Claire and, uh, a branding of some type. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, the motion has been made and seconded. Questions on the motion? Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. Just clarification, is what's before us, though, just approving the, the proposal from, or working with the specific, specific company to, to accomplish what we want to get done? And if so, then it also talks about the fact that we are going to have other changes and suggestions and ideas throughout the next six to eight months as well, that maybe we want to incorporate Commissioner Tewol's suggestion and others at that time? My question or comment?
Councilmembers.
The resolution, is it to, the directive to somehow get the word "Eau Claire" in that? Is that what the directive was, or? I would defer to Visit Eau Claire and any of our interested parties on committee to work to see what that, uh, how did you phrase it, Councilmember Emanuel? It is a, um, it is a, whether it's an icon, whether it's, uh, an abbreviation, something that brands, a, a branding method. So, I, I don't want to say that it says "Eau Claire," some way branding that when people see that, that's definitely. When we see the big cherry in one area, we know where that is. that's definitely, when we see the big cherry in one area, we know where that is. So a branding element that is unique to Eau Claire. And let Visit Eau Claire look at that. And if they come back with no directive, they like how it is, then it goes forward as is. But the, and to the other, I think this is the point when we're commissioning the detailed design, this is the point to get it in or, or not.
Further discussion? So we're, now we're going to take up this motion to amend the resolution awarding a contract for professional services by asking them to examine with Visit Eau Claire a branding, the words were of some type, but I'm sure the city clerk will clean that up a little bit. A branding effort, something. Okay, ready? Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I would have to take exception to the remark that now is the time. This project has been gone through so many public meetings and been looked at so many times. We're approving the drawing up of construction documents and final design. And now we're going to make a decision about changing that after all the work that's been done? I think that's a little, I don't think I'm up to it personally. I think there are more opportunities.
Okay. There being no further discussion on the motion to amend, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Von Hayden?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
And that motion fails on a six to four vote, but we had a good discussion, a good discussion ensued. We're back to the resolution as moved. Any further discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 16 is a resolution approving the 2018, 2022 capital improvement plan for the city of Eau Claire. The city manager has a statement regarding this motion before we proceed. Mr. Peters? This resolution, sorry.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. In, in the past, we've had a, an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the, the CIP before the councils asked to take action. Administratively, we had an oversight and did not get that scheduled. So we would respectfully ask that you could postpone this for two weeks and at which time we would schedule a public discussion the night before for anybody that would want to weigh in before you take your final action on the CIP.
So moved?
Second?
The chair seeks a motion to postpone for two weeks as moved by councilmember Strobel, seconded by councilmember Von Hayden. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And imposed. The motion of the ayes win. Item 17 is a resolution creating new election wards within the city of Eau Claire. Madam City Clerk?
Good evening to the council.
Good evening.
Since I appeared before the council the last time on this issue, the council approved six different annexations. Three of those annexations require the creation of new wards for voting purposes in the city of Eau Claire. The determining factor of whether or not we need to create a new ward is based on where the property that's been annexed to the city, what assembly district that is located in. If it is in the same assembly district as the adjacent property in the city, we do not have to create a ward. If it is in different assembly district than the adjacent property, then we do need to create a new voting ward. So as you can see up in the northeast part of the city, we have land in the city of Eau Claire, in the town of Seymour, that's in the 68th. A large portion of the city is in the 91st, but we have a smaller area down here in the southeast portion, Oakwood Mall and along the Highway 53, that's in the 93rd district, as is the area in the town of Union and town of Washington surrounding the city. The two most recent annexations that the council approved two weeks ago, this is the mega annexation down on the south side of the city, this land is in the 93rd assembly district, as in the land adjacent to it to the north, so we did not have to create a ward for that. Same situation on the north part of the city, this is the Betchard Annexation. The town of Seymour is in the 93rd, as in our, is our 11th voting ward, so we were able to absorb that into that property. And then back in 2016, this property was annexed to the city, it is in the same assembly district as a ward we created previously in 2014, so they could be combined in the same ward. However, there are three wards that we do have to create new, three annexations, excuse me, that do require new wards. The first one is at the intersection of State Street and Westover Road. It's the area here. This area is in the 93rd, the city, however, is in the 91st, so that will require a new district. We'll be voting at Bethesda Lutheran Church on West Hamilton. A single lot was annexed here on the west side of Sherman Creek Road. Again, city is in the 91st and this is in the 93rd district. And the final one was the annexation just two weeks ago, I believe, also, on Session Street. That property, again, being in the 93rd, surrounding city in the 91st. This will create Ward 69 for the city and they will be voting at Trinity Lutheran Church.
Questions for Ms. Austin? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Maybe I just wasn't paying attention, but I think I was. So there's, it could be like just an individual home that was a, and they're going to have their own voting ward?
That is a potential, yes. We do have that in a few situations.
And why, again, can't they just be added to the ward that's right next to them?
According to state statutes, once assembly districts are set up, state assembly districts, they cannot be changed until the next redistricting after the census.
And do we do that sometimes? Well, then we'll just change them up and, and combine them?
We don't make these boundaries. These are done by the state.
Okay.
There are actually two items on your agenda for consideration this evening. The first one is the resolution on the business agenda, creating these three wards, and then the next item is a charter ordinance, and all that is doing is adding those three wards to the description that's in the city code, so that lists the complete description for each aldermanic district of all the wards included in there.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Austin. On a motion then by councilmember Weld, seconded by councilmember Klinkhammer, item 17 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Worthen?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. There are three ordinances for introduction, as is my duty to read them into the public record, the first being an ordinance rezoning property at 1302 115th Street from I-2 to R-1A, an ordinance rezoning property located at the southeast corner of I-94 and Highway 93 from TR-1A to C-3P, and to adopt a general development plan for a commercial development. And lastly, an ordinance rezoning property located on the north side of Stonewood Drive east of Milrun Road from 2CP to R-3P with a general development plan for a memory care and an assisted living facility and approving a CBRF. Do councilmembers wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these introductory items? I see no such desire. Announcements are then in order. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two announcements tonight. The first one's a little hard, but after 30 years and 22 years as your city clerk and the city's city clerk, Donna, is retiring. This is her last meeting. We calculated it, she has been to over 1,056 council meetings, plus all of the work sessions and other things that happen. She works tirelessly for us. After, you may, you may not know this, but after the meetings, she goes upstairs and sometimes very late in the evening is typing up the minutes and, and putting things together for you. And, you know, in addition to her work for the council and the minutes and all of that, she has tirelessly overseen our election process and for 22 years has assured that we've had fair, impartial, ethical elections. And she supervised thousands of election workers and I, I can just want to say that, you know, Donna has dedicated her career to public service and there's really no better and shining example of a competent, humble, ethical, public servant. And I hope you'll all join me in wishing her a long, happy and healthy retirement.[1605.83][1605.83][applause]
The city council will do something a little bit more formal at another meeting, if Ms. Austin will allow us to, of course. The city council counts on all the attributes that Mr. Peters just enumerated that are embodied in this lady. Especially when there's chaos, maybe at the national level, certainly uncertainty and we're not real sure of things. When you have somebody in this important role who does things right, then you are building democracy, one city at a time. And Ms. Austin, you always do things right.